Good evening, I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting for order.
Hang on a second. Sorry. Thank you, sir.
Mary Lee. Just make sure.
First of all, I'd like to read a statement from the Falkirk County regarding the COVID-19 coronavirus. We have some, just quickly, I'll just give you the first paragraph, and then there's the full statement we'll be posting on our website, and I think we're going to post it on the Facebook page.
We are, and we also have specific information on our website regarding the CDC guidance and our Health Department guidance and other materials related to the virus.
Okay. So basically, Falkirk County in conjunction with Commonwealth of Virginia and United States of America continue to monitor the evolving COVID-19 outbreak. The Board of Supervisors and county government have been hard at work to try to minimize the spread and severity of the virus in our county. County staff has been and continues to be in direct contact with the Rapidan Regional Health District regarding the potential spread of the virus and the actions that need to be taken by the county and citizens to limit its spread and the health effects of the illness. So for more information, you can also go to the CDC website, and again, it'll be posted on our website and our Facebook page. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I could make one other comment, too.
Sure.
We had an unconfirmed report of someone in Falkirk County having been tested positive. That report was false at this time. The Health Department confirms that we have no reported cases in Falkirk County. So if you see something on Facebook at this particular point, it's not true. It was mistakenly put up, so stay calm, keep washes in your hands, and we'll all get through this.
Sounds good. So we'd like to start with indication. Chairman, excuse me.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank the opportunity to serve you and the fine folks of Falkirk County. So we're thankful for the folks who came out to be with us tonight. We pray for safe travels home. Lord, we also pray that decisions made tonight are pleasing unto you. We ask these in your name. Amen.
Good morning.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt the agenda with the following change, add a new consent, agenda item number six, I, a resolution affirming commitment to restore the right of way for the posting of temporary signs related to the United States Census.
On my favor, do I have a second?
No, we need a second. I'll second it, but I also would like to propose a modification to the agenda that we move item four, citizens' time, to number three. I mean, we move item five, proclamation of recognitions, in front of citizens' time. So they would switch, proclamations would become four, citizens' time would become five.
So with that change, on my favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll start with proclamations. I'd like to ask, during Eddie Payne and Tom Mereble to come up to the front, please.
No Mustang Sally tonight.
It is my honor tonight to have a proclamation to honor Chief Eddie L. Payne for his dedicated service to the citizens of Falkirk County. Whereas Eddie L. Payne is a lifelong resident of Falkirk County and a native of the Village of Marshall, where he and his family continue to reside, and wears a local businessman since 1980, Eddie Payne owns Payne Trucking, Inc., providing a vast array of professional trucking services to Falkirk County and neighboring localities. And whereas in 2014, Eddie Payne was appointed to the Falkirk County Towing and Recovery Advisory Board to protect the public by setting standards of qualifications, training, and experience for those who seek to represent themselves to the public as towing and recovery professionals, and to promote high standards of professional performance for those engaged in the practice of towing and recovery. Whereas Eddie Payne and his wife Brenda were named 2015 Citizens of the Year for Marshall District by the Falkirk County Board of Supervisors for their service and outstanding commitment to the community. And whereas in 1976, upon graduation from Falkirk High School, Eddie Payne immediately began his service with the Marshall Volunteer Fire Department, an active group of members who aid residents located in one of the largest first-duty service areas among Falkirk County's volunteer fire and rescue companies. And whereas, after just two years with the department, he became a second lieutenant and proceeded to work his way through the ranks until he was voted chief in 1997 and 2006. Eddie Payne was again voted chief in 2018 until 2019. And whereas Eddie Payne chairs the Special Operations Division of the Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Management, offering specialized training and expertise in swift water rescues and hazardous materials response. And whereas Eddie Payne has worked to provide firefighters with cutting-edge training and technology to better serve the community. And whereas Eddie Payne is actively involved in fundraising efforts to benefit continued operations for those who serve and safeguard the members of the community. Whereas the Falkirk County Board of Supervisors wishes to honor individuals who have made exceptional contributions to their fellow Falkirk County residents and the county as a whole, now therefore be proclaimed by the Falkirk County Board of Supervisors this 12th day of March 2020, that Eddie L. Payne be and hereby honored for his dedicated professional service to the citizens of Falkirk County. And I forgot to mention the Christmas parade, which we wouldn't have without you all.
Yeah, this is a great honor. I really appreciate it. I've been surrounded by great people throughout the years. Tom Mereble, Chief Stevens, and it's been a pleasure to go out and help people all these years, and to make a difference in somebody's life, it's a great honor, and I really do appreciate this. Thank you.
I just wanted to add really quickly, I just wanted to add really quickly, that as a parent, we sometimes struggle to make sure our kids are finding role models, and we're really blessed in this community. And if you're in the same boat, I suggest you go down to your local firehouse, because there's plenty more Eddie Paynes out there where they came from. There's a lot of great folks in this community.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to say is, you know, in our whole lives, we look to make a difference, and I can say that Eddie has left footprints all over this county making a difference. His passion for the fire service, he shared with Darren and I in his beginning days here just a few weeks ago, and his enthusiasm, talking about it today as he has when I first met him, has been incredible. And his enthusiasm for the fire service, actually took him to a career job in Arlington County, but he was more passionate about his trucking business in Falkirk County than he was about the fire. So he left that, remained a volunteer, and has been serving the community not only as a public servant, but as one of the best business owners, I think, in Falkirk County. Great job.
Is Sam Fisher's family, are they here?
They are here.
Come up, please.
Mary Lee.
And the Vice Mayor, would you please come up? I'd like, I have a joint proclamation to honor and congratulate Falkirk County High School Wrestling Athlete Sam Fisher and head coach Doug Fisher on winning consecutive state wrestling championships. Whereas Sam Fisher is the first Falkirk County athlete to win four state championships in wrestling, compiling a record of 171 to 24 over his high school career. And whereas Sam Fisher has worked tirelessly to become an All-American, nationally-ranked wrestler and honor student. And whereas Falkirk County head school wrestling coach Doug Fisher led the Falkirk High School Wrestling Team to their third state championship in 2020. And whereas Doug Fisher has helped educate and develop many young men through his coaching and mentorship. And whereas Doug Fisher has volunteered countless hours to the Falkirk County Sports Foundation to promote wrestling in Falkirk County, now therefore be proclaimed by the Falkirk County Board of Supervisors and the Warrenton Town Council, confirming this 12th day of March 2020, that Falkirk High School Wrestling Athlete Sam Fisher and Falkirk High School Wrestling Coach Doug Fisher be and are hereby recognized to congratulate for winning consecutive state wrestling championships. Congratulations.
I guess, I mean, I'm the one up here today getting recognized, but really, I believe strong-heartedly that I'm a product of my environment, of my father, my mother, all of the coaches at Falkirk, teachers, administrators, and they're really the ones that have raised me to be what I am today, and I'm thankful for all of them, and I'm thankful for this opportunity and for this recognition and this award. So thank you all.
On behalf of Mayor Carter and my fellow colleagues on the town council, the town of Warrenton, we too would like to congratulate you for this unbelievable accomplishment, probably will never be repeated again. So congratulations.
Okay, so now we come to the part of our meeting which is citizens' time, and during citizens' times, anyone can come up to speak on any issue that is not on the, does not have a public hearing. So we ask that each one come up, that you state your name and your majesterial district, and then when you're finished talking, to please sign in with Mrs. Culbertson. I would also like to, it looks like we've got a lot of people here, so what I'd like to just remind everyone is that in the event that there are more than four speakers who wish to speak during citizens' time, the chairman should allocate the 20 minutes that's allowed for citizens' time to be in an equitable manner. So I ask that each person remember, we have a total of 20 minutes for this, so if you would mind just stating your name, whatever the issue is, and then so we can have time for everybody to speak. And we'll go ahead and start now. Okay, thank you. Any speakers for speakers, for citizens' time? Hey, Mary.
Hi, Mary Lee, Chairwoman Mary Lee. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Mary Wilkerson, in the Marshall Magisterial District, President of the Marshall Business and Residents Association, the original grant applicant for this project. The MBRA has been studying this in detail for almost two years. We've also recently walked Main Street with VDOT. It is our opinion, of course, that we need to do everything possible to stop this, that Marshall is actually going to be better off business-wise, attractiveness, safety, be better for business financially, and for our residents, if we can just do the, an alternative of letting VDOT go ahead and pave and maintain, and we take it step by step, and we avoid the destruction. And we also would like to, we're just, we're not professionals, we're just a grassroots group, and so we don't know what the correct terminology is, but whatever the correct terminology is to cancel the project or to, we understand there haven't been any public hearings on this for years, and people are just really finding out the details of the plan that we didn't receive until August of 2018. So given the fact that there have been so many changes in such a long time since a public hearing, we really ask that whatever it takes to, whatever the correct terminology is, that you would, that the County Board of Supervisors would allow that process to take place, that we proceed with either defunding it or having a public hearing about it, whatever the process is necessary. Thank you.
Mary, you want to sign in, please? Mary?
I'm sorry, I also have 126 form letters along with petitions. We have 126 form letters against the project from many Main Street businesses and residents in the lighting tax district. So all of these, I'll leave with Renee. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Teresa Patton-Munoz. I'd like to echo what she said. I live at 8293 East Main Street, so I'm in the Marshall District. I'm also in the lighting district, so I'll be impacted by the rate fees that are going up, and to have this go on for just a one-block section, I really think it's a bad plan, and if I had a coupon for something I didn't need to buy, I don't think I'd buy it. Also, my car was totaled two weeks ago. I was parked on the street in front of my house, and a truck took out the front end of it. So having the street get two feet narrower, I think, has a lot of safety repercussions. And I wait for three different buses, a head-start bus, an elementary bus, and a high school bus, and I think, thinking about the many children in the buses that we have going back and forth, it needs to be considered. My first daughter was in a wheelchair. I spent a lot of time thinking about ADA and how to get around in a wheelchair, and from what I'm understanding, we wouldn't really see any benefits from the plan to what we already have in place or could easily do. So I'd like to support what she said, and ask that we consider not throwing good money after bad.
Thank you.
All right, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm on TV. So I don't need a sticker to say what side I'm really going to be on. I have much respect for you, Mary Lee, Mr. Trumbo, you know, as well as for Mary.
Can you give us your name, please?
Oh, folks, my name is Joe Delisi. My family and I own Joe's Pizza and Marshall at 8349 West Main Street, right there in the dead center heart of the project for the sidewalk. And, you know, I do what I feel the people that support me are in favor of. I do have some that are in favor of the sidewalk, but I feel that I have a lot more people who are not in favor of the sidewalks. Hey, how rude, guys, I'm up here. No, I'm just kidding. So I do what the people that support me are in favor of, because my businesses is based on foot traffic. If people can actually get into my business and get out of my business, I think it's going to put a big damper on the foot traffic of people who can actually get into my establishment to access the product of pizza which is being sold there. And so I would say, I could go on and on, but I don't have very much time. I'm not in favor of the project for the sidewalks. Once again, all the years that you all have committed to this and given to, you know, the time, countless hours, and so please, if there is anyone that doesn't agree with me, I hope that you still continue to buy my products and eat my pizza, because that's how I make a living, but don't let my opinion affect you, because I'm not in favor of the sidewalks. I'm a really great guy, I've got, you know, a good family, and once again, God bless Marshall, and God bless you all, and yeah, thank you for your time.
Chair, you're signing.
Good evening, Chairwoman McDaniel, and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Mary Elizabeth Wilkerson. I'm speaking as secretary to the Marshall Business and Residents Association, for which I've served as secretary for six years now. I live in the Marshall Magisterial District, and I work on Main Street in the lighting tax district. I'd like to respectfully ask that you all cancel the project, however that looks procedurally, technically, that you please cancel the project. It's a very respectable and wise thing to do, because it is in the best interest of Marshall. There has been opposition to this project all along. It's not that people are late to the game or anything like that, including in 2013, when that Board of Supervisors voted to increase the taxes. There was opposition that spoke out then, as well as a petition of 65 signatures that was turned in. And something that I noticed when going through the records is that on January 10th of 2013, the large hearing for that at Warrenton Middle School, six of the people who spoke in support of the tax increase for those in Marshall were outside of the Marshall Service District. And again, the next month in February, two of the people who spoke in support were also outside of the district and wouldn't bear the tax. So I ask that you please cancel them. These plans that we're talking about today haven't been around for 10 years. They were released to the public, to the community, and to the MBRA in August, at the end of August of 2018. So there is not widespread support for it, and it would be much appreciated if you would consider cancel. Thank you.
Hey, everyone, how are you doing? My name is Lance Allen. I reside at 9531 Primrose Lane. Today, I'll be speaking on behalf of Paul Lawrence, who is basically a lifelong citizen of Falkirk County, owns a business on Main Street at 8354 West Main Street. So I'll be reading his letter, which I think has been entered into the record, but I have to say, Paul asked me to read the letter because he couldn't be here tonight. I've read the letter, talked with Paul, spent many time talking with some of the supervisors about the project, and very well aware of the project, and I have to say, 100% everything that I'm about to read, I fully concur with. So I hope you'll, you know, take the time to listen to what Paul has to say, because I think it is the echo of many voices. So I'll just start, try to make it brief. It's a long letter, so I'll be as fast as I can, I promise. My name is Paul Lawrence. I'm a lifelong member of the Marshall community, own property and business located on Main Street Marshall, and my family has continuously done so since the 1930s. I'm in full support of the Main Street project. I'm writing to convey some factual information and dispel any misinformation that may have been deliberately broadcast by misrepresentatives of the now diminished Marshall Business and Residents Association, or MBRA, of which I was an original and longstanding member. Most of the original members, to include me, resigned last fall in protest over the usurpation of authority by the president of that organization. For those of us who have labored on improving Marshall for many years, we find it very difficult to understand why the last-minute opposition to this project that has been so thoroughly vetted, and which was, we implored the community to be involved in every process along the way in its design and approvals throughout the entire process. So pardon if I come across a bit harsh, that's Paul, not me, just so we're all very clear. Pardon if I come across a bit harsh, but I have spent countless hours for over 15 years volunteering by serving as chairman and/or member of the development committees appointed by all three of our last Marshall district supervisors. In doing so, I and many others have represented the business and residential community to ensure we have a great design while mitigating the downside of the construction. So don't get me wrong, I own a business on Main Street, and yes, I have a business license. I own a significant business structure on Main Street. I will benefit from the improvements, just like I will be adversely affected like everyone else who operates on Main Street. So the last-minute opposition from one individual who's contributed very little to our community, and who has managed to stir up passion from a few others who have not been given accurate information, has me a bit arced. So why the opposition? I'm going to skip over a few parts here, because Paul's very passionate, and I want to get to some of the factual information parts of it. So we have, for over 50 years, all around this country inadvertently spurred the destruction of our business core. In every town and city across the country, there's a battle for good jobs, not just a job, but the one that provides a living wage. That's why this project exists today. We've allowed our Main Streets to devolve while focusing investments and business emphasis on big-box stores and strip malls. This is usually done on lands just outside of our towns in an attempt to absorb additional tax revenue to offset the service demands created by the license and new homes, or the increase in new homes, excuse me. It has not just happened here, it has happened almost everywhere, and you have all witnessed it. When community spending is drawn to the outside of town and off its Main Street, the result is, the Main Street suffers, the business core suffers, the community suffers. So let me be clear, I am not opposed to the food line shopping center, the TSC, or any of the other businesses who take advantage of the locations at the entrance of Marshall. I fully support them and shop at them. But I also support and ask you to continue to support the Main Street project, which is to create a Main Street that is conducive to new business paradigm, small and craft businesses. By creating a more attractive Main Street with street trees, brick accents, lighting, and one that is safer, and one that has been enhanced with the latest technology, we will attract new kinds of businesses which will thrive in a small community. So let us examine just for a minute. There are three phases for the planned redevelopment of Marshall Main Street to include Phase One, which is that core that you heard about earlier. This will happen from the BB&amp;T to the corridor coffee shop, including both intersections. Phases Two and Three will encompass the eastern and western gateways adjoining Main, and this should happen if we, as a community, can demonstrate that we can get this core section completed. So this dispels any bit of misinformation that the project is only for a small, select group or a small, select block. We have every intention of enhancing the entire version of Main Street. Main Street Marshall was widened and flattened in the 50s to make Route 55, we know as Main Street, a primary highway with speed on Main 35 and even higher at the gateways. The expansion removed any front porches, yards, gates, and fences, thus severely damaging the character of our small town. With this street enhancements of this project, we are expanding the width of our sidewalks from four feet to five feet, adding street trees, paved crosswalks, and other visual enhancements which will induce traffic calming and should result in involuntary slowing of traffics. These enhancements will add safety, walkability, seatability in many places, which will help our frontage businesses, as well as improve safety and accessibility of children, elderly, and the disabled. To do this, we will narrow Main Street by 11 inches. Let me highlight, we will reduce Main Street by 11 inches, not two feet. This is still within the VDOT requirements and exceeds that of other small towns and villages outside of ours. Misinformation has been broadcast, and I want to make sure that we clear up the nonsense. Additional misinformation has also been broadcast in an attempt to scare business owners that the roadway will be closed off to traffic, and there will be no parking, excuse me, there will be no parking available to businesses. Again, not the truth. The conduit, excuse me, the conduit ductwork will be in the north side of the parking lane and will minimally NP traffic. Many businesses, to include mine, have made commitments to make their parking areas available. Sorry.
I'm trying to ask, can you kind of close up?
Yeah, I'll close up, absolutely. I know it's got a lot longer. What I'll say is this, I read through the letter. There was a lot of factual misinformation in there. Information that I heard tonight, I went back and researched myself, and I found it to be false. The letter is on the record, and I think that if you go back and look at this project, that you're going to see it's good for our community, it's good for our businesses, and it protects Main Street Marshall, and that's what's important to me as a citizen of Falkirk and as a citizen of Marshall. I'll leave the rest on the record. How about that? Thank you, ma'am.
Be sure you.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Connie Jones. I'm in the Marshall Magisterial District, and I own and operate a business on Main Street, West Main Street, in the special tax lighting district. We took up quite a bit of time. I hope that we could extend the time for citizens' time. There's a lot of people here that would like to speak. I know that having a business, it's a hair salon, and I talk to a lot of people. Many, many people are opposed to this. The number-one reason is the narrowing of the streets. They consider it a danger. I know it's called traffic calming, but it's going to be hazardous for our fire and rescue equipment getting through, school buses, large farm equipment, delivery trucks, and so on. I do want to ask everyone to stand up that's in opposition of this, just so you can see in case they don't have time to speak tonight. And this is just a very few of the people that I've spoken with. I mean, there are many, many people opposed to this, and for different reasons. The tax increase, the determinant of business, you know, there's, I have friends that all have businesses here in Marshall I've grown up with, and their businesses will suffer if this project goes forth. And we all know that it's going to suffer, it's going to cause them to suffer. Some of them may even have to go out of business, as happened in Middleburg. So we have a lot of things to compare this to, actually. The bumpouts with streets in Upper Ville and Middleburg, it's not working. Traffic calming, I don't know, I've heard people say, no, it's still the same. So I really hope and ask that you all would really. So I really hope and ask that you all would really consider canceling this. And there are options. We have confirmed with VDOT that there will be a two-foot loss of roadway. I don't know where the one foot comes from, but VDOT has confirmed two feet. So I ask you to consider canceling the project. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Margarita Grady. I live in the Center District, and I'm also a school social worker for Faukeer County. So I work in Marshall, but I'm not here to talk about Marshall at all. I've lived in Faukeer County for 20 years, and I have been providing mental health services in Faukeer County for about 15 years. And over the last few years, I've seen the public mental health services available in the county become less and less available due to state and county budget cuts. So currently, I'm a school social worker, and I'm here tonight to ask you to fully fund the school budget as presented to you by the school board. I may not be available for the public hearing next week. This budget includes raises for professionals that did not receive raises last year, including the school psychologists, the school social workers, the speech-language pathologists, basically the professionals that all have their own independent licenses that could go out into private practice or work in a hospital, but choose not to because they believe they can do the most good by serving the students in the schools. They haven't had raises in many, many years, and these raises are much deserved. And in addition, this budget includes funding for two new school social workers. These mental health positions in the public schools are a very efficient use of resources. With two new school social workers, you're going to get help with the special education process, mental health counseling, behavior, support for students in the schools, and perhaps most near and dear to my heart is the suicide and risk of targeted violence assessments that we do on behalf of the school division and also in the community. Our work genuinely saves lives. We're also the liaison between the schools and the families, for families that need additional mental health services, that need food, that need housing, that are homeless. We're the boots-on-the-ground that are really helping our most fragile students, and I really hope that you will consider fully funding the school board budget. And if not, if you would please consider funding for those two new school social worker positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Will be sure to sign in. Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Mary Crawl. I live in 8614 Colston Court in Marshall, the Marshall District, and I'd be in the tax lighting bracket, and I'd like to cancel the project, if you consider that, please, for two reasons. For the increase in taxes and for the narrowing of the Main Street. Thank you.
Be sure you sign in.
My name is Patty Cloud, and I live in Marshall District. I moved to Marshall about, almost 50 years ago, and I've been a supporter of MBRA and other local community organizations the whole time I've lived here. And I have felt in the minority a number of times in different issues in my past, and I really feel in the minority tonight. I'm in favor of this process for Main Street and Marshall. I think it's going to be a really good effort to improve Main Street. And for a long time, I've had a vision of no power lines along Main Street, and I think this would be the prime time to get something like that started. And it would be such an improvement for Main Street. If we need to do a huge project in order to get the power lines down, that would be a start. But getting the power lines off Main Street would be such an improvement, and I've been in favor of that for a long time. I think, I bought my building on Main Street in 1978. In 1978, several people, including Mr. Payne that we bought the building from, mentioned that there had been some talk and some brouhaha about having construction on the Main Street and mainly taking the power lines down. That was in 78, what, almost 50 years ago? So it's time to do something.
I'm Chris Cloud. I also live in the Marshall District. I'm here speaking on behalf of two other people, and I'll make it brief, because I know there's a line of people behind me. Speaking on behalf of Anne Michelle Green, who couldn't be here this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, my family and I own 8390 West Main Street in Marshall, and I'm a resident of the Marshall side of Scott District. There is full support from many businesses and property owners for the Marshall Main Street Improvement Project, including my family. This includes the immediate property owners within the improved project area. There are a few points I'd wish to emphasize. One, all utility easements and construction easements for the Marshall Main Street improvements have been signed by the property owners. Two, the narrowing of the roadway is within VDOT standards and is one foot wider than minimum width for the road classification. Three, the construction area is .22 miles from Rector Town Road to the other side of Frost Street. This equates to 1,188 feet. For perspective, one block in Old Town Warrenton is 218 feet. Number four, various property owners have agreed to allow parking during the construction phase of the project. I have been a real estate broker on Marshall's Main Street since 2011. During such time, property owners, purchasers, and investors have inquired the status of the Main Street Improvement Project. There is support to complete this project for the economic viability of Marshall Main Street, despite the fearful and negative rhetoric. I encourage people to ask questions from anyone of us who have worked tirelessly to improve the safety, beautification, and economic viability of Marshall. Thanks for your time. Sincerely, Anne Michelle Green. The second letter, if I may, is from the Regenerative Medicine and Spa. The Mr. and Mrs. Poss, doctor. To the Faukeer County Board of Supervisors, we are Michael and Jean Poss, the property and business owners of Virginia Regenerative, say that three times fast, Medicine and Spa, located at 8451 West Main Street in Marshall, Virginia. Although we are not directly impacted by the Marshall Streetscape Improvement Project, we wish to express our full support. The Marshall Business and Residents Association, MBRA, seem to have an opposition to this project. They also appear to represent all of Marshall Main Street businesses in opposition to the project. While I do have some concerns about the potential impacts that we will face as a result of the upcoming construction project, we do not share the perspective that the project will harm Marshall businesses or residents. We trust in our community's ability to persevere and thrive during construction. We believe that the project will ultimately help all of our businesses grow and will help Marshall improve as a whole. We are hoping at some point the Streetscape Improvement Project will move to West Main Street as well. I kindly ask that my comments be added to the record. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Dr. Michael Poss and Jean Poss. Thank you.
My name is June Martin, and I live in Marshall. I'm in the lighting district. I have, first of all, I think the project is way too expensive. And the second thing is, I wanted to know who will actually benefit from this project. If you can or will let me know, I'd be very interested to know that. So I object to this project. Thank you very much.
My name's Maurice Casey. I live in the Marshall District, have a business in Faukeer County. I'm a veterinarian, and I just had a couple comments. First off, I guess my math is not very good, because the gentleman back there stated with Mr. Lawrence's thing that they are only going to widen the sidewalks from four feet to five feet. Well, that's 12 inches, right? And he says it's only going to narrow the streets 11 inches. Well, if you put it on both sides, that's 24 inches. So my question is, we're this magical, we're only going to lose 11, or are we going to cut the front of the businesses off and move the sidewalks back? That's one question. Second question is, I moved to Marshall in 1994. My father and mother moved from McLean in 1954, and I have watched the progression of the locus of Virginia go from McLean, Clifton, Centerville, Manassas, Haymarket, Gainesville. I don't see any of that that looks better than what Marshall is already. And for 6.2 million, and for 6.2 million to add one foot to sidewalks that already meet the standards of the American Disability Act, and yes, you're going to extend it into the gateway, but that's additional money, additional taxes to the community. And I just don't think it adds up mathematically. Thank you very much.
Sir?
My name's William Hines. I'm a resident of the Village of Marshall and the district, lighting district, and on the heavens of earth. This sidewalk issue seems like it's already, is existing at five feet, so it's AD compliant anyway. So we welcome the board to use a tape measure, a rule, or whatever you have to confirm this. But the issue is, we ought to just turn loose VDOT to make the corrections, repairs, fix the cross area where the light is, so we get rid of the two bumps that causes a lot of headaches and heartaches for trailers and what have you that cross both of them. Horse trailers have, understand, is a big problem, because the horses could lose their stance on the stand. And this project is money-wise, what would you gain out of it? We ought to have a downtown that is serviceable. And by tearing everything up, you have to have across the street cutting, nobody mentions about it, to get to the other side of the street, south side of the street, to put the power in. So I would say, cancel this project. Thank you, board.
I guess you know why I'm here tonight, but on my shirt. My name is Harold Cross. I live in Marshall, the village, 8614 Colston Court. And we ask you to please cancel the project. I drive a truck and trailer, and people think it's not going to do anything with the traffic down there. It will. You can't get two trucks, big trucks, down through there at one time. I seen buses down through there. Someone's got to stop. People come across the crossroad going for the restaurants and everything, they got to stop in the middle of the road. You have to have a lay-down area for your construction site. I mean, so many sidewalks going to be blocked with brick, stone, gravel, whatever they got to put on the road. You know, you're going to lose a lot of area. You're not going to have a road roof with trucks or anything, no cars going down through there. So whatever's saying is not going to affect the traffic, it will. We just got to stop the project. Thank you.
First of all, I'm not a public speaker. I speak a lot, talk a lot, but this is nervous. My name is Lori Carter, and I have a business in the middle of Marshall, this project thing, 8352 West Main Street. Not only would I like to say, let's end this project for just concerns of safety reasons for the public, my clients not being able to get to my business on time, which is very important. I'm worried about school buses with children in it waiting, and it gets hot, there's no air conditioning in the school buses. This is agricultural area. There's horses in vans, that there's cattle. There's lots of concerns. The narrowing of the roads is going to create terrible issues when people open the doors on their car. You know, it's just a lot of things that I think everybody needs to consider, you know, doing anything like this. It's just, seems like it's not a very good idea, so I am opposed to it, so.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Cloud. I live in Marshall District. Tonight, I am going to read a letter from Field in Maine, from Neil Waver. It says, "To the Faukeer County Board of Supervisors. For the record, my name is Neil Waver. I am as a property owner and a business operator located at 8369 West Main Street in Marshall, Virginia. I am directly impacted by the Marshall Streetscape project, and I wish to express my full support for the project. The Marshall Business and Residents Association, of which I used to be a member, has mounted a vocal opposition to the project. At point, some of these statements seem to suggest that they speak on behalf of all of Marshall Main Street. This is not so in my case. While I share a number of concerns about the potential impacts that we will have to face as a result of the upcoming project, I do share the perspective that the project will not harm Marshall. I have more faith in the community and the ability to persevere and to ultimately thrive through this project. This resolve is bolstered by the knowledge that the Marshall residents and Main Street property business owners are already working together to address these concerns. My building dates back to the 1790s and was a tavern in the 1800s. During this time, Marshall was a vibrant town on Main Street and a gathering place, one that saw local residents coming and going, salespeople, travelers, and passersby. I am proud to be part of the Marshall evolution and excited to recognize Marshall as a project as we work together. I kindly ask my comments to be added to the record, and I thank you for your considerations. As a resident of Marshall and working with a lot of the different businesses and owners, there's a lot of people that support this project. They've been involved in this for a very long time. They do want the power lines buried and this project to go forward. Thank you. Please contact everybody about the budget."
My name is Bill Corish. I'm a resident of Linden in Faukeer, but my business is on Main Street in Marshall. I rent, I'm an engineer, and I rent an office on Main Street. And I want to say, I'm new to my office, so this issue is new to me. It's not something I've been aware of for a long time, and then all of a sudden, I'm, you know, talking about it. So I'm just giving you my impressions. I like Marshall the way it is. I understand the high deal about improving things, and maybe if that's, you know, the way ultimately folks want to go and turn Marshall into Middleburg Light, you know, but I like it the way it is. I'm sure it would be great as Middleburg Light, too. But I think you're going to have businesses that are going to disappear, that aren't going to be able to afford it. You know, I've heard, I haven't had time to really get into the details, but I've looked at the numbers. They seem ridiculously expensive for the return that I would think the town is going to get, unless, like you say, a whole bunch of people move out and a whole bunch of other people move in. Then maybe it's worthwhile. But I walk, you know, my favorite business is Joe's Pizza. I walk the street often to get lunch, and, you know, I just enjoy it. I like it the way it is. So I'm just giving you my perspective of things. And I don't want to see Joe have to raise his price of his pizza in order to help cover the taxes.
Thank you.
My name is Barbara Hoileman. I live in Marshall. I've lived there 45 years. I have a business on Main Street. I've had the business now for eight years. I'm here to say that I oppose the project. It's costly. It's not going to improve the things that need to be improved. There are some things that need to be done to Marshall to make it look pretty, but there are things we can do that won't cost the kind of money that you're talking about, or the project is talking about. It's my understanding that there's 816 businesses or residents that are affected by this. I would like to see some accounting for who is in favor and who is not. I want some kind of a vote, something that's on record, that people can honestly say, yes, I am, or no, I'm not. I am, or no, I'm not. And until that happens, we're not going to really know how many are truly in favor or who are against it. Some people can't get up here and stand and say something, or come to a meeting and say something. But when you talk to them one-on-one, as I have recently, they don't want this project. Please cancel it. Whatever, whatever the language is, don't go forward with it. Thank you.
George Thompson, and I'm a resident of a good many years of Marshall, and a property owner in the east, East End. And with no reference to my chronology, as the speaker, several, four or five speakers ago, mentioned the ease of driving cattle down through Marshall, I got to say that I remember very distinctly driving cattle through Marshall. And, and then when I think about that, I think, my goodness, I believe we waited long enough to get some sort of improvements. Well, I didn't necessarily agree with the improvements we made when we tore down, removed the parking and tore down the trees, but in retrospect, it was a constructive move in the long run. So I think that's very much the case now. We, as young citizens of Marshall, have waited a good many years for improvements. And so this is not a perfect program, as I will admit, and we've seen that sort of criticism going back and forth. But I believe it is very much a case of the right time to move ahead, and maybe later on, we can polish some of the questions we've got now. But as, as a resident of a good many years, I would definitely like to recommend approval. I thank you kindly.
I'm Ron Holman, and I have a business in Marshall with 8440, and I am opposed for this project to go forth. And to my understanding, that the bids that came in did not include the rock. And I have worked construction all of my life, and I know what it is to go in and try to remove rock and what it's going to cost. So if you go for this project, you're giving some contractor an open check to go in and remove that rock. It's not going to be just, it's not going to be just 6.3 million. You're looking at probably another five or six million to remove that rock for one block, drop the power lines. You cannot still enter Marshall without seeing power lines. 55 East, 55 West, you got to come in, you're going to see power lines. So what good is it going to do, one block, and maybe cost 12 million instead of 6.3? Thank you.
Man, I got to follow him. Yeah, go on. All right. My name's Philip Roper. I live in Marshall. I'm 4165 Frost Street. I'm in the special lighting district. I've been living in Marshall for about 15 years now. I actually live in the same house that my in-laws had. I won't say how long she's been there because I want to make sure she can ride the car with me on the way back. I have a lot of questions about the project. I am currently opposed to it. Doesn't mean I couldn't be swayed, but right now, with all the changes that have been made, I would love to see something where we could scrap it and start over fresh so that everybody knows exactly what's going on. I have so many questions, and I don't know who to ask. I hear different views of what's going on. I don't have any answers. And one thing that does concern me, or that I'd like to bring up, is I haven't heard anything about after it's done, the beautifying Main Street. I'm curious, who's going to be in charge of keeping it beautified? I think VDOT is in charge of the streets right now. Will they still be? Because if they are, I don't know who is, but it's not great now, and I always hear these great ideas, and now I wonder, okay, everybody's good at coming up with ideas, but they're never good at maintaining it. So I'm curious, who's going to trim the trees? Who's going to keep the sidewalks clean? Who's going to sweep the streets? Who's going to pave it? Who? That's what I'm worried about, because we could get it done, and then two, three years from now, it's going to look junky again. So that's my question. But thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Joe Sarsoar. My family owns Glasgow Grocery and Nix Market on Main Street. We've been there for 27 years, and I've just never seen the town this much divided. It's really sad. I'm opposed to this project, very much so. I oppose to the historical overlay. We've already seen what happened to that. I mean, we can't, the theater in the middle of town, we can't, we can't do anything with that one because if it gets tore down, it has to be built back the same way it is. It's just a really sad situation in Marshall right now. We, that's where we are on Main Street, the east side. We're going to be paying for the upgrade of the one block of Marshall, and I just don't think it's fair. I also own, I also own properties that are at every entrance coming into Marshall, and I definitely oppose to this. To be really honest with you, no one would benefit as much as I would if this project was to go forward because all the construction in the middle of town would drive everyone down to my side of town, but I'm not going to sell out the town for this. It's really sad. I've, I've been able to acquire so many properties in this last year from people that just want to get out of Marshall and not be, because they don't know what the tax is going to be. I'm not asking you, I'm begging you to please get rid of this project. Thank you.
I'm Kathy Boone. I live in Marshall. I also work Main Street Marshall. I have several concerns. I'll make it short. The narrowing of the street concerns me for a lot of reasons. Safety for the farm equipment, everybody going through, fire trucks, EMT, they're concerned for their safety and the people crossing the street. Also concerned for the tax increase. There are people who are struggling now, budget to budget. A tax increase would be hardship on them. I also feel that I have concerns like the other gentleman. Once this project's done, who's taking care of it? Who's maintaining it? Now it's VDOT's responsibility. Whose responsibility will it be then? And will that be Falkir, all of Falkir County's taxes going up to maintain the sidewalks? Cancel the project. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Brett Stoker. I live on Robert Circle in Marshall. We've lived in Marshall for 16 years, raised five kids there, and we've never once had a problem walking on the sidewalks in downtown Marshall. None of my relatives who've come to visit have ever looked up and said, dang, it's a shame about those, those power lines or those phone lines. Nobody notices them. I know, I don't notice them. And I don't think it's fair that the residents of Marshall need to pay to make such fancy upgrades at especially at high cost. We're not going to see great benefit out of them. I understand people who frequent some of the businesses say, oh, it's, it's okay in Marshall, but it'd be nice if it just looked better. We don't need to pay, if they want it to look better, then there needs to be a better funding source than the residents. We can't even afford to frequent some of the businesses that draw the, the people who make those comments. We can't afford to eat there, so I don't see why we should have to pay to make it all look all nice how they want it to look. And as far as the, the streetlights and the, we have to walk a quarter mile just to get to the nearest streetlight in, in our neighborhood. And if we want to walk down into the, the Main Street, that's a, over a half-mile walk, and most of it's, there's no sidewalk, we're tromping down Winchester Road, either getting chased by dogs or trying not to get run over on the road. And we would rather see sidewalks along there or down at the other end between the townhouses and Food Lion. We're tired of nearly running over people in the dark there who wear black and walk into the road at night where you can't see them. That's where improvements need to be made, not on the Main Street. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Deanna Holmes. I live in, on Main Street Marshall. I live in the tax and lighting district, and I want this project stopped. Having been a Falkir County teacher for eight years, the lady that was here earlier speaking about services for children, there are so many other issues and needs that we have in this county that taxpayer money would go to, to benefit more than throwing away 6.3 million dollars plus to a project that does not solve very many issues. There are so many other needs, and particularly in Marshall, the water. I, I would be here for hours explaining as a 25-year resident, plus before that, the problems that we face in Marshall. Widening and making it pretty, we can do that at a far less cost. Stop the project now, please.
Hi. My name is Jan Snodgrass. I actually live off of Crest Hill Road, but I drive through Marshall all the time. I have horses. I'm driving horse trailers through there, and I have seen plenty of times where people fling open their car doors as they're parked along the road, and you got to slam on the brakes. I see logging trucks coming through town a lot. Now, what's going to happen when a logging truck comes and a fire truck comes, or a school bus or something? There's not enough room. It's so close now. I don't know why anybody would narrow that road. Now, when, when, if you're going to do this construction, where are you going to route everybody down Salem Avenue? Now you're going to have logging trucks and fire trucks and buses and horse trailers going there? I don't, I don't see what benefit this is. And I've lived in a bunch of different places during my life, and, and I've seen places try to make something really fancy, build, do all this construction, make it really pretty, but it's not supported by the people that live there. You know, I, I lived in Toledo, Ohio. It's a blue-collar town downtown, and they tried to make it this big, special, really nice fancy area. It just went broke. It went bust, and it, it all went away. And I don't know, Middleburg might be able to handle it, but I don't know that making it pretty is going to solve problems in Marshall. I think you make it nice, you make it workable. All right? Thanks.
Any other speakers?
Hello. My name is Carter Stoker. I'm Brett Stoker's son. I live in the Marshall District, and I live in the special lighting district. I've lived here 16 years of my 18 years of living. I don't have any memory before I moved into this house, so I might as well have been born here. Like my dad said, we have to walk a half-mile to get to the nearest street lamp, another half-mile to get to the nearest sidewalk. I'm against the building or the modifications to Main Street because I don't think this county is capable of doing it competently. The sidewalk that my dad referenced going from Main Street to, the sidewalk that my dad referenced going from Main Street to Food Lion is a simple, at the most, 100 yards of black concrete with no guard railing on the side. Right next to it is about like a two-and-a-half-foot ditch that someone could just fall into and drown them at night. That, that sidewalk took about four years to go from grass to, from grass to dirt to gravel to gravel that was cordoned off for further construction, and now it's finally achieved its final state of just a narrow strip of tarmac. I don't, I don't, I have doubts about the capabilities to pull this off competently. And also, in regards to narrowing the street in order to slow down traffic, that is inherently insidious. It makes, it creates a hazard and a danger to drivers that necessitates a change in behavior. It's not encouraging people to follow a new law. It is creating physical dangerous consequences to people who don't follow the law. It's like reducing obesity by poisoning junk food. It's, you know, if I'm going down the street in an F-150 and somebody else is coming down the street with a new Chevy Silverado, do I veer off the road into the Bentley to my right, or is he veer off the road into the new Rolls Royce off to his right? None of which are owned by Marshall residents, I might add, the people who park on there. Thank you.
Sorry. I didn't get to use, just one more minute. I was just thinking, as I was coming here, every time I come, I sit next to the sheriff. I don't know why. He always sits to the left. I always want to go to the right, but I always sit next to him. It gets me so nervous, I forget my thoughts. But as, I was supposed to, I was supposed to come, I was supposed to leave work early, go home, change, so I can come to town proper. And I was just thinking, everyone that's in this room, we're all the working people of the town. We're all the people that, that are here right now. Everyone else that sent the letter in, they're not working, they're not grinding every day like we are, because if they were, they could come tonight. So we're the real deal. We're the ones that don't want it. Thank you.
Any other speakers? With that, I'll close Citizens Time, and I give the room a few minutes to clear out. If, if everybody wants to leave, feel free to do so. I'd just like to say this one thing. Thank you for listening to all of the people. I really appreciate it. It was very kind of all of you. Thank you very much. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion for the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move adoption of the consent agenda as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we go to item seven, a resolution to approve revised payment levels for the purchase of development rights for the PDR program. This was sponsored by Mr. Supervisor Gerhart, and since he's not going to be here, he's unable to be here this evening, I'd ask that we postpone this for up to 60 days.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we come to appointments, and we have two this evening. The first is for the Marshall District Water and Sanitation Authority representative, and Michael Ficazia, who is currently serving, has agreed to serve another term. So, does anybody have any other appointments for this? Then he's approved. We also have another appointment for the Northern Virginia Regional Jail, and Jack Ledden has, has agreed to serve. Does anybody else have any other? No? Then that's accepted. So now we move on to supervisor's time, and I'll start with Supervisor Butler.
Thank you, ma'am. My first announcement is regarding the fundraiser happening this weekend. My friends down at Remington are going to load up their big chicken cooker, and they're going to go over to Brandy Station, and they're going to do a drive-through chicken dinner to help raise money for the Shallow Baptist Church that burned back last fall. So Sunday, March 15th, from 12 to 4:00. If you're out that way, and you've got a few extra bucks and you want some good chicken, ride over and let the folks at Remington feed you. The only thing I want to add, other than that, is expand upon what Mr. McCullough spoke about earlier. I know not a lot of people here, hopefully some folks are watching from home, but this afternoon, a firestorm broke out on social media regarding this inappropriate post regarding the coronavirus. I was in a local establishment getting a haircut, and my phone wouldn't stop ringing. I went outside several times, talked to people from Madison, Charlottesville. What's going on? What's going on? Because people kept sharing an inaccurate post. I gave mine up. I gave mine up because I couldn't take the stress of it anymore. So I didn't know all that was happening. Spent a lot of time with the sheriff and Chief Stevens, trying to get in touch with the folks at Walgreens that actually gave us information that it was false. So please, again, folks, don't share any information regarding this that you know is not accurate. You're welcome to reach out to me. I've said in public forum, my phone number's 540-229-8873. Call me and I'll get confirmation for you. Because this stuff just creates mass panic and unnecessary issues for the sheriff, for fire rescue, and for us. So again, I say it probably once every two months. Don't rely on social media to get your government. Come right to us and get that, if you would, please. And that's all I have, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor Granger?
Thank you, Chairman. I really don't have anything tonight. Pretty much so Mr. Butler said what I was going to say about the coronavirus. I would say folks need to definitely take it seriously. Definitely, you know, practice separation from other folks as much as you can, which the CDC is recommending. And, you know, if you are a compromised individual, you know you have respiratory diseases, you're immunocompromised, and those folks all know who they are. Definitely take it seriously. What the general population is being told does not apply to you. And that's the folks that really need to be paying attention. And it might be an inconvenience, but this disease has proven to be very dangerous to folks with those types of respiratory conditions. So follow all that guidance coming out about pneumonia shots and flu shots for specific age groups and all of that. And I will say, the General Assembly finally, they somehow modified the Constitution of Virginia to be in session more than 60 days. I don't quite know how that's possible, but they did it. Finally wrapped up a budget. And I will have to say, they had some good things in there, but I was pretty disappointed where they landed on education. You know, obviously, being a Republican and the Democrats took over the House of Delegates. And the Senate, there was a lot of promises made to educators. And they didn't come through on anything. 2% raise across the state for teachers, which is beyond what we were going to do in this county anyways. I would certainly hope folks that supported all those folks going to Richmond might want to take a second thought about where they piled their money. They piled their money on gun control and a bunch of programs that aren't going to impact education at all. It's just going to all kinds of, I don't even know what. They raised the budget something like $850 million over what it was last year. And almost none of it's going to education. So pretty disappointed in that. I hope our school board lets Delegate Guzman know what a bad job she did. I'll just throw it out there. And bring it at home for Falkir. So, but I was pretty disappointed about where the General Assembly landed on education. I think it's probably the worst year education's seen in a while, even with a Republican-controlled General Assembly. It was brighter skies than that last couple of years. So I'll leave it at that.
Supervisor Trumbo?
Well, following on a vein of thought there, it is budget time for the county as well. And this is important, and I sit here and I make this plea every year. We want to hear from you. We need your input and your feedback because it is your money that we are planning to spend here. Having said that, next Thursday, 7:00 PM at Falkir High School, is the hearing on the budget. Now, given current events, we understand why folks might be reluctant to come to that event. That's completely fine. You may send us an email. You can send us a traditional letter. You can give us a call. But please, give us your thoughts. Give us your feedback. We make much better decisions with your money when we have your feedback on how to spend it. So please, I know there's a lot going on. People are worried about a lot of things. I agree completely with what Supervisor Granger said about education. But the problem is, that leaves us holding the bag. That leaves us to fill that gap and to take care of the folks who are taking care of our kids and our future generation and their ability to pay off the debts that we are racking up now, quite frankly. Having said that, though, we need to hear from you. So please, please let the board know what's important to you as spending priorities, so that we can make better decisions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you all very much. And I'll just add that I know there's a lot of concern and worry about the current state with the coronavirus. Just be reasonable, pay attention, follow the CDC rules, and do what we can to minimize the spread of the disease is all we can do at this point. So just be mindful of the rules and wash your hands for 20 seconds and, you know, whatever you need to do to stop that. And I'll say, on a happier note, I do want to congratulate the Falkir County Girls Track Team. They came in second in the state. And my granddaughter's on the team. And I'll also say that they, she used to anchor for the four-by-four and they broke the school record. So I'd like to give them a congratulations. And now we go to announcements. Mr. McCullough?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, as Supervisor Trumbo did indicate, this is budget season. And we have budget hearings on Tuesday, March 17th, at 2:00 PM here in the Warren Green Meeting Room. On Thursday, March 19th, we have a joint Board of Supervisors School Board Work Session at 4:30. That will be in the Falkir High School Annex. That same night, March 19th, at 7:00 PM, we will have our traditional budget hearing, tax rate and capital improvements program. I will note that in regards to that, we are working with our AV people to ensure that that hearing is televised so that people will be able to see it real time. And Mr. Rankin is doing a heck of a job trying to get that figured out. Then we have our Mark Up, Mark Down meeting on March 24th here, which is a Tuesday here in the Warren Green Meeting Room. And hopefully, on March 26th, we will conclude the budget process with the adoption of the budget, the tax rates, and the capital improvements program. I will also note, for people who are interested in the coronavirus and need or wish to have information, if you go to the Falkir County website at www.falkircounty.gov, you will find a banner that you can click on and that will take you to the most current CDC information regarding the coronavirus. And it also will include information from our local health department and then general tips on how you can try to protect yourself and your family from getting the coronavirus or mitigate its impact upon you and your families. So we would recommend, if you have interests in that, please review those provisions also. Finally, the Board of Supervisors' next regular meeting will be on March, or April 9th, at 6:30 PM here in the Warren Green Meeting Room.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate everybody's patience because now we go to the public hearings. And the first one is a resolution to approve special exception, SPEX 19-012059, Oak Spring Garden LLC. An application to amend previously approved Category 7 special exception to allow the adaptive reuse of existing buildings for a scholarly research center.
Thank you. As you mentioned, Oak Spring Garden Foundation is seeking to amend their November 2015 special exception for adaptive reuse for a scholarly research center. The applicants have requested to modify some of the conditions of their previous approval to better suit their needs and allow for the expansion of their facility. These include changes to their meeting times, extending them till 9:30 PM, as well as provisions that allow all day-to-day regular operational meetings, as well as public visits for regular residential and agricultural uses to be incidental and not count towards the total meetings allowed by the research center. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing.
Madam Chairperson and members of the board, I'm Baki Slater. I'm from Opelika, Virginia, Marshall Magisterial District. I represent Oak Spring Garden and Oak Spring Garden Foundation. When we started this project in 2015, we didn't have a crystal ball. There was nothing in the county ordinance that would allow what Mrs. Mellon wanted as her vision. Of course, Mr. Trumbo knew Ms. Mellon very well and he was quite helpful. But her dream was to have a place for scholars from all over the world to come and study, to study plants, to study landscape, to study horticulture. She also had the Oak Spring Library, which had very rare books that these scholars could come in and see. So when we did our application, we did not list every building that they had on this lovely facility. So we came back in and decided that we would have an application for adaptive reuse of the existing buildings. And there are 35 buildings. And for instance, the Apple House, which had refrigeration and everything, Sir Peter Crane and the foundation decided that they didn't have a building big enough for meetings and for office space. So therefore, they needed to change that building. But the exterior of the buildings are all the same. And then, as we were doing this, we needed amendment for minor changes to the special exception because the hours weren't exactly what they needed. And there were just very, very few changes to this. And I would like, at this time, to introduce Sir Peter Crane, who is the president of Oak Spring Foundation, manager of Oak Spring Garden, and a leading authority on forestry, environmental studies, and has even written a book on the Ginkgo tree. Sir Peter?
Madam Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors, my name's Peter Crane. I'm the president of the Oak Spring Garden Foundation. I don't really want to take any more time, except to thank you for the special exemption that you granted in the first place, without which we wouldn't be operating now. And to ask you for your consideration of the relatively minor modifications to the special exemption that we requested today. My guiding principles in developing Mrs. Mellon's vision is really to provide the public benefit that flows from our status as an operating foundation, to try to fulfill Mrs. Mellon's vision for how this property could be used after her passing, and also to be a good neighbor to colleagues and friends in Falkir County. And I thank you for your consideration of this, which is devoted to trying to make sure that we can deliver on those three areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we please sign in? Oh, you already signed in. Okay. Are there any other speakers on this matter? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
It's your district.
I move that we adopt a resolution to approve special exception, SP 19, Oak Spring Garden Foundation LLC. An application to amend a previously approved Category 7 special exception to allow the adaptive reuse of existing buildings for a scholarly research center.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to say what an honor it is to have a facility of this caliber in our community and Mrs. Mellon's vision is being well honored by Sir Peter Crane. So thank you all. With that, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Nay? Votes have it. Thank you. Now we go into our second public hearing.
I think it was really great of Nick to show up just in time to take you out for dinner here, buddy.
Thank you.
Take care. Then our second public hearing is an ordinance to amend the Falkir County zoning ordinance, Article 13, Part 6, pertaining to administration, amendments, violations, and penalties.
This ordinance amendment is to bring the enforcement sections of the Falkir County zoning ordinance up to date with the Code of Virginia, remove some ambiguities, and make it possible to fully implement criminal penalties in appropriate circumstances in zoning violation cases. Planning Commission held a public hearing last month and unanimously recommended approval of this amendment.
With that, I'll open the public hearing. Are there any speakers on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd move adoption of this ordinance to amend Falkir County zoning ordinance, Article 13, Part 6, pertaining to administration, amendments, violations, and penalties.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And I think we are adjourned. Thank you.